I have to get off at 6:10, I mean, sorry, 7:10.
Sure. So with that in mind, before we move into public comments, Delegate Charcutian, because we got a little bit of a later start, I would like to provide you with an opportunity to introduce yourself and to speak briefly about some of the priorities that you would like to make sure that our residents are aware of, that you are shepherding in Annapolis.
Great. Well, thanks so much, and thank you for your flexibility. I had, I'm here in Austin for the National Conference of State Legislators Energy Security Meeting, and on that task force, been appointed by the Speaker to serve on that task force and doing really important work to make sure that our energy grid remains safe and secure and reliable. So I apologize that I can't be there in person. I hope everybody in the room and everybody watching at home knows how to reach me if they need to talk to me directly, and I will commit to watching this meeting later, the recording of it, so that I can hear whatever is said in public comments that I missed today and whatever other council members share after I get off. So we'll just say briefly a couple of big, big sort of bucket areas that I'm focused on in general and continue to be focused on this session. I think folks know that I do a lot of work on climate justice in a number of different areas. This year, I'm focused especially on network geothermal. It's a way to electrify entire neighborhoods in a way that's very efficient. And so it lets us really do the electrification that's needed for the climate and do it in a way that minimizes the impact on the electric grid. And so it really shaves the winter peaks and some really creative stuff happening in that area. And if anyone's interested, I'm happy to follow up with more specifics. I also am generally and continue to do a lot of work related to pedestrian safety and complete streets and Vision Zero, and I will continue to do that. I have a couple of bills this year that relate to that issue. I do a lot of work on mental health policy this year. I am focused on parity and addressing issues of the way that health insurance companies cover mental health compared to the way that they cover physical health and really making sure that we have that kind of parity so that folks have access to the preventative care through their health insurance. Which will go a long way to the prevention side of things. I've done a lot of work over the last several years on the crisis side of things, and we've made some progress. We still have a ways to go, but I'm focused this year on what I hope will support the prevention side of things. I continue to work on, and Senator Smith may speak later also about issues of fire safety. We're still trying to find the best path forward. So no details yet on exactly what that bill is going to look like, but we will have a bill related to that. And finally, on the food system side of things, which is another area that I tend to do a lot of work. I have a bill that's really focused on reducing food waste, compost, cold storage, so that we can rescue more food, keep it from going into the landfill, but also feed it to make sure it goes to feed food insecure families in our communities as well as supporting small and distributed on-farm compost and other sorts of things. So it's focused on enabling a tipping fee for the enabling Maryland Department of the Environment can implement a tipping fee to fund all of these various ways to keep organics, both for food waste prevention, rescue, and then compost and recycling. Those are some of the bigger ones. I have a number of other bills, probably far too many, as we tend to in District 20. They will all be up on my website within a few weeks, and I remain available to speak to any specifics or answer any questions if folks want to follow up.
Thank you so much, Delegate Charcutian, and it sounds like a wonderful opportunity for you to represent the efforts that you have underway here in Maryland, in Austin, Texas. I know that there are a couple of folks on council that have a couple of quick follow-ups. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Delegate Charcutian. I just wanted to continue to encourage you with the specificity of your bills and the technical capacity in nearly all of them. It's hard to get around the things that you propose, and I think that's really awesome. In particular, I encourage you to continue your efforts to make the State Highway Association more accountable to the residents and/or delegates and/or anybody. Thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, go right ahead.
Yeah, well, so I have actually a really interesting piece of legislation related to the State Highway Administration. One of the things that often happens, and for example, the crossing at Seek Lane and University that we've been asking for since somebody was killed there in 2018. Several of those projects, we're told, are held up because of utilities. And utilities commit to a project timeline. And then when utilities don't follow their project timeline, there's no accountability for the utilities. And so the State Highway Administration, we actually lose money. We lose, when we, the state does, when we are behind on our transportation projects. We lose money and the utilities, who are the ones who are slowing us down or slowing down the, you know, in this case, a crosswalk, but it could be any state, any transportation project. So I have a bill that actually will require, if the utilities don't stick to the schedules that they create with State Highway Administration, they can be held accountable for the costs to the state. And specifically for the rate, the regulated utilities, the bill prevents them from taking it from rates. They have to take it out of shareholder profit. So really trying to get at all the angles and all the aspects. We've done a lot of work, and I have another bill that is about holding MDOT accountable to Safe Streets policies, but also really looking at what are the things that are out of the State Highway Administration's control and how can we really address those issues as well so that we're getting it from all angles and really getting the smoothest and most accountable and most safe and efficient way of keeping our roads safe for all users.
Your technical expertise belies your commitment, and that's cool.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, very quickly. Hi, and thank you for everything you do for all of us in District 20. I wanted to comment on, to see if you wanted to comment at all on property, state property taxes and your efforts to try to put together a bill that would adjust the eligibility for lower-income property taxpayers.
Sure, yes. As I mentioned, I have several bills. I was trying not to go over every single one, but that is an important one. Thank you. So there is a homeowner's tax credit, and then there's sort of a parallel renters' tax credit. And the, you know, part of the idea of it is that as property taxes increase with, in general, as home values increase, we want to have, make sure that folks, especially often seniors or low-income folks who are in those neighborhoods aren't priced out because of the taxes as they increase. And so the figure, the tax credits, I don't have, I don't have the bill right in front of me, but the credit, for example, was set at, you get credit for the first $300,000, I think, of the home, and that was set sometime in the early 2000s and hasn't been updated since then. And so adjusting it for inflation without even taking into account the significant increase in home values would put it at $450,000 at this point in time if we just adjusted for inflation. And so there's sort of updates like that that we have in the bill, and in particular, really looking at areas that have very rapidly increasing home values, along the purple line in particular, where there's a significant concern about displacement of people who have lived there for a very long time. Now, the purple line's coming in. The people who have lived there should benefit from that new transit. And so the bill generally updates a number of those categories to make it a real tool that can keep people in their homes. And it also, there's a disparity between the renters' tax credit and the homeowner's tax credit. We're sort of more generous in the homeowner's side of things, and so we've adjusted that so that, so that's this sort of parity between the homeowners and the renters' tax credit.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Delegate Charcutian. We appreciate all that you do for District 20, especially your advocacy. And I'm very excited about the mental health parity work that you have underway. And one of the things that we will be requesting in the city of Tacoma Park bond funding for is to support providing space so that we can have mental health crisis services here in the city. We recognize that, you know, normally bonds don't go towards, you know, municipal buildings, but in a place like the city of Tacoma Park and Down County, where space for mental health services and space for addressing these kinds of issues come at a premium, it's important for us to try to think outside of the box, and you'll hear this later, but when you roll back the tape, but to be able to think creatively on ways in which we can make sure that we're providing the necessary services that our residents need. So I appreciate you tackling the issue in Annapolis, and I think the mental health parity question is critically important to making sure that people have access to the services that they need. So thank you so much for that. So with that, I'm going to turn things back over to our public comments. I'm going to read the rules again. So just as a reminder, public comments during this meeting should be directed to the District 20 delegation. Comments are limited to three minutes each, and the overall time for comments is limited to 30 minutes. So residents should have signed up ahead of time? Perfect. Thank you so much. And just want to get started with the first person on the list, David Reed.
My name is David Reed. I'm president of Long Branch Sligo Community Association, for whom I am speaking this evening. I would like to express our appreciation for the members of the D-20 delegation for engaging in this discussion with the community tonight. And I'd likewise like to thank Delegate Charcutian for her participation in our association's annual meeting this past October. For reference, Long Branch Sligo lies just south of Carroll Avenue and between Long Branch and Sligo Creeks. We host about 440 residential units, some of them multifamily units, most of them single-family homes. The major concern of the associations of late concerns the minor master plan. Over two years ago, the association submitted a statement on the county's planning staff in which we affirmed the following. "We are strongly supportive of the creation of new housing opportunities, particularly for low- and moderate-income families. We are also supportive of modest economic commercial development in the planned area, and that support continues today emphatically." While welcoming development, neighbors are also concerned mainly about its potential impact on the increased traffic through our neighborhood. "We were also hopeful two years ago that the plan would create greater engagement with the university and with neighbors on the other side, particularly in Ward 5. Over the past two years, details of the planned amendment have become clear and perhaps accentuating association concerns on two counts. First, neighbors now have far greater concern about the plan's demographic densification, which will significantly increase traffic throughout the neighborhood. We have repeatedly asked for and have not received analysis of the potential impact from the planning board staff. We are aware that SHA plans to realign the Flower and Carroll Avenues intersection. However, that realignment will not address the anticipated heavier vehicular volume that is sure to follow the approval of the MMPA." Our second concern in the association is now giving much more attention to the broader public transportation issues serving the neighborhood. For example, just a minute detail. Ride On recently eliminated the most popular, most widely-used bus stop for the neighborhood. While the county DOT could celebrate an efficiency gain of 23 seconds by eliminating that stop, a number of people in the neighborhood said they've started driving their cars again, having the perverse impact of putting more vehicles on the road rather than alleviating them. And this situation then is intensified by the fact that neighbors do not know how to raise concerns, share concerns, interact with those who make the decisions about public transportation. So I thank you again for your support and interest. We will need to maintain our active engagement with U.S. transportation and development issues affect our neighborhood in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Ambrose Agassi, you're up next.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Senator Smith and Delegate Charcutian. I may mispronounce the name, Moon Wilkins. My name is Ambrose Agassi. I live in Wasis. I am a business owner and one of the proud Black African-American residents of this city. I also have a degree in environmental science, and my specialty... also have a degree in environmental science and my specialty in water resources management. Thank you for coming to our city council meeting this evening. I believe that Tacoma Park residents need help with the following items. One, we need better traffic control and the regulations that slow down the traffic in our city. We need more speed bumpers, plastic road dividers, and more road dividers and the crosswalk signs that remind drivers of pedestrians in the city. Two, we need assistance with installing permeable sidewalk and driveway with all properties. Permeable driveway would help improve the flow of the traffic because a car would be off of the street, reduce carjacking, and improve the health of the Chesapeake Bay by reducing the stormwater runoff. Three, parents need free before and after-school program for their children. Four, local small-business owners, entrepreneurs, and the private sector employer need support to be successful and to make our city grow and thrive. Five, our low-income residents need affordable high-speed broadband access. Students also need access to high-speed internet connection to be able to do their homework on time and properly. And finally, Tacoma Park residents need to encourage the creation and the maintenance of a friendly atmosphere. This can be done by supporting organizations and events that bring Tacoma Park residents together. This is what I want to share with you this evening. Thanks for listening. I will also leave a copy of my speech that the staff can share with you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, Mr. Buddy Daniels.
Buddy Daniels, 908 Prospect Street. Thank you to the delegation for what you've done over the years, and thank you for how you've supported the city and also the Democrat precinct chairs in the city and all the volunteers. This year, what I'm going to try to do is help to find precinct chairs, make sure all of the Tacoma Park precincts are covered with chairs and vice chairs, Democratic chairs and vice chairs, and certainly a couple of the surrounding precincts in summer and spring, and help any way I can with the connections I have, certainly for the primary and the presidential election. I was, from 1985 to 2016, I was a precinct official up at Precinct 1321, which is the Tacoma Park Junior High School, and now, of course, Middle School, and then took rolling terrace over for a year or two. And I now work up at the early voting, but definitely come back into Tacoma Park and come into this area to recruit precinct chairs, Democratic precinct chairs, certainly work with your offices, let them know what's happening, coordinate like we always have, and of course, work with the Montgomery County Democratic Central Committee. So we'll see what happens, see how it goes. It's going to be an interesting year, to say the least. So thanks again. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Do we have any virtual participants? Okay, perfect. All right, let's... Okay, so we're just waiting on our virtual commenter? Okay. Mary Machui? Mary Jane?
Hello?
Hi, how are you? We can hear you.
When did you all start? I logged on at 6:32 and stayed on to 6:50, and I was the only one there. When did you all start?
Well, we started a little late to get everyone a chance to get settled, but we're here now, Mary Jane. The mic is yours. You have your three minutes.
Thank you. We need more than three minutes.
I'm sorry?
And you're not taking my house. You're trying to take my house and kick my son and I into the street, and you're not going to do it. That's my three minutes. You're not taking, kicking me in the street.
Thank you very much, Mary Jane. We appreciate your commenting. Okay, so those are all of our public comments for this evening. And so now, we're going to move on to a presentation that the Tacoma Park City Council has prepared to speak through the legislative priorities that we have as a city. Perfect. So first, we just want to, again, thank you all for coming tonight. And to just provide a little bit of an overview, the City of Tacoma Park has council priorities, and they're a tool that we use to guide our budget decisions and making and outlining strategies to make sure that we're achieving our desired outcomes. And on April the 12th, this particular council established and adopted priorities through 2024. And the priorities consist of the following five goals: ensuring that our community advances a community of belonging, has fiscally sustainable government, is an environmentally sustainable community, encourages community development for an improved and equitable quality of life, and has an engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government. Tonight, we're going to walk through the ways in which the D-20 delegation can help us with advancing these priorities during this legislative session. And so with that, I'm going to turn the discussion over to Councilmember Hansett, who will discuss our advancing community of belonging lobbying requests.
Good evening. So during the pandemic, we saw firsthand the pressure that many residents are under to make ends meet. Issues such as provision of mental health services and access to affordable childcare are just two examples of what our residents need. And additionally, as a sanctuary city, we also saw the unique challenges that our undocumented residents faced, particularly as it relates to accessing healthcare during the pandemic. Therefore, the city is continuing its advocacy to address these challenges. And specifically, in 2024, we support legislative efforts to expand both public and private health insurance to people without legal documentation. We support legislative and budget initiatives that make childcare services more accessible and affordable. And we support additional funds for municipalities to address community mental health service needs through initiatives such as crisis intervention teams. And now I'll pass the discussion to Councilmember Fulcher, who will walk through our fiscally sustainable government lobbying requests.
Great. So like other communities, the City of Tacoma Park is facing financial shortfalls due to inflation, lack of diversity in revenue sources, and other external factors. It is critical for municipalities and their residents to have economic relief. In 2024, the city wants to collaboratively explore potential sources of new revenue streams from municipalities, such as the authority to collect a sales tax, receive a percentage of sales tax collected in the jurisdiction, receive a portion of revenue generated by alcohol and tobacco sales. Another goal is to support legislation to change calculations to the homeowners and renters' property tax credit programs. And now, Councilmember DiBala will discuss our environmentally sustainable community lobbying requests.
Well, thank you all for coming and listening. So considering the once-in-a-lifetime federal and state funding that's available for climate, that's, the city's been focused on identifying ways that we can coordinate across different stakeholders to get those resources and use them here and on sustainability program. What the city is asking the D-20 delegation to do specifically, to support legislation that prohibits deceptive recycling claims on packaging and products, support the Renew Act, the Responding to Merchandise Needs from Extreme Weather Act, and invest in disaster relief and preparedness, to support progress on climate solutions with an eye to the impact on new construction, in particular in the city, and support stormwater mitigation efforts, including funding and technical assistance geared to municipalities. And I will pass it on now to...
Councilmember Small.
Councilmember Small. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DiBala. The City of Tacoma Park is also committed to advancing its Housing Economic Development and Vision Zero goals. To achieve this, though, we must have increased support at the state level. One of the things that's been clear to us is the commitment that you guys have to us, but with regard to state agencies and things like that, we have had some difficulties. And so we also think that this includes vital engagement with SHA, and funding for programs like the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund. Specifically, we're asking the D-20 delegation to pass legislation requiring the State Highway Administration to increase its responsiveness to the pedestrian and cyclist safety needs of our community, to pass legislation enabling local jurisdictions to enact just cause eviction laws, to support budget and legislative initiatives to significantly increase the stock of affordable housing, including housing for the missing middle and for people with disabilities. And I'd like to expressly note that this is one of the things that we, as a council, are very interested in. And I'd like to publicly express our commitment to Ms. Machui. And then the last thing is to support legislative efforts to create a source of funds for multifamily buildings, including condominium rehabilitation. As an aside, I would just say thank you to all of you, and consider the possibilities of getting kids to recreate instead of do squirrely things all over the place. Now, the mayor will discuss the city's bond funding request for 2024.
Thank you.
So I would like to discuss with you an important capital project that would benefit from your support. The city used its ARPA funds to build a two-year pilot program to employ two mental health counselors on a full-time basis to respond to calls involving residents in crisis and suffering mental health issues. The counselors will work with the city departments and the Montgomery County Health and Human Services Crisis Teams to respond to active cases and provide follow-up for identified residents. The goal of the pilot program is to address mental health and related needs in the community, and to move toward a non-policing approach to mental health crisis intervention. However, we need additional space to adequately implement and sustain this program. The city is undertaking a $1.2 million capital project to renovate the community center. The renovation includes filling in the atrium area. You might have seen it, but that kind of creates a vacuum or echo, so everyone can hear everything that's happening on all three floors. And so the renovation includes filling in that atrium to provide residents in need of support, more privacy, so that when they come in to receive those services. The project will also allow for much-needed office space and meeting rooms for mental health counselors to meet with residents. The construction will be completed in 2025. And what you see here on the screen is the floor plan that would include the mental health crisis location. So it would include office space, a private conference room for mental health consultation, also will allow for mental health crisis to engage with our police dispatch, which is really important, especially as we're working to address aspects of 988 calls. There is a need for 24-hour crisis behavioral health service in Down County. However, the space is needed, is limited. So we have to think, as I mentioned before, we have to think outside of the box of where we can potentially identify these spaces to provide these services to people. So we're asking for your advocacy for $200,000 that could help us with addressing any additional funding needs that we may have for this capital project. It's critically important for us to bring this to life, and our hope is that it will ultimately result in a more sustainable approach for us to provide mental health services to our community. So with that, that's our presentation. And... So now, we wanted to also provide you all with an opportunity to provide us any comments in terms of policies that you have underway, but also responses to the priorities that we've outlined here in the city. You can start. No worries.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Good evening, everyone. My name is Will Smith, State Senator, representing you in the Maryland State Senate. Mr. Reed, we'd love to have an invitation. I know we got one member of the delegation out to your community meeting. You know, I speak for the rest of us. We'll be there. You holler, we'll be there. So we'd love to, not that I want to invite myself to your civic issues, but I'd love the opportunity to engage with you all. Mr. Agassi, I see you're still here. Thank you for your speech and your presentation. I think a lot of what you've said resonated with us, especially with regard to pedestrian safety and some of the sidewalks. That's something we've been working on for a long time. I know Delegate Charcutian's been there as well. Buddy's gone, but, you know, he's my guy. I'm glad he's interested in making sure democracy's thriving here in Tacoma Park with the precinct officials. And then, and Mary, I will give you, if you're listening still, I'll give you a holler after. I'm sure we'll all probably follow up with you, but thank you for calling in. It's always good to hear from Ms. Machui. Look, I'll address quickly some of my responses to the, some of your priorities here, and then go through a couple of hot topics that are going to happen in JPR. I'll be very quick. I know we've got a long list of folks that come down, so I'll be very, very quick. I'll skip along to the last, the bond bill. That resonated with me because one of the priorities that we will have in JPR is addressing mental health and the intersection of mental health and the criminal justice system. We, in the House, Delegate Moon and Delegate Penny Melnick had, you know, worked really hard to pass a bill. There was an intercept model that was really diversionary, making sure that folks with mental health issues had another avenue, and the supports to make sure that not only do they not recidivate, but that they also get the proper services that they need to thrive. And so we're coordinating with the General Assembly, GOCAP, which is the Governor's Office of Crime, Children, and Crime Prevention. The name changes every year. We're also working with the Judiciary Chief Judge Fader of the Maryland Supreme Court, Chief Justice Fader with the Maryland Supreme Court, and the Maryland Department of Health to advance these initiatives. This is the first time since I've been in the General Assembly that we've all kind of come together and started advancing some of the legislation that was aspirational, largely aspirational in the last couple of years. So it's really, really exciting. You know, if you look at our jails, you know, mental health issues are four to six times higher within, you know, within our jail system. So it's a significant issue. And MDH, the facilities for beds for, you know, mental health treatment, they have about, they operate at about 98% capacity at any given moment. So they're only about, you know, 1,556 beds, you know, throughout the entire state of Maryland. And the people are waiting for, you know, there's a backlog after they come out of the court system. So this is a significant issue. So this bond bill project for CIT and for counseling is, I got really excited. This is really, really great stuff. Anarundel County is also doing some really innovative things. I'd encourage the city to look at what Anarundel County has done, to fold that into this project here. So I think it's really great. I'll, in, so that's, juvenile justice will also be a significant issue that we address and continue to address in the Judicial Proceedings Committee. Also, gun safety issues will remain prominent because of some circuit court decisions in Maryland and in the Fifth Circuit, which have now been up to the Supreme Court. So we can talk a little bit more about that in depth, but I don't want to go too much into the weeds on that. And then the mental health piece. So those are the three core issues that are going to be, I think, dominate the majority of our committee's time moving forward. But these initiatives are fantastic. Look, we also have housing in JPR in the Judicial Proceedings Committee. So the housing initiatives, I know that Delegate Wilkins is obviously leading on just cause, and I'm going to, you know, do everything I can to assist her in that effort, because that comes through my committee. You heard it here first. And so I'm looking forward to it. So I really, I really do appreciate what you all are doing to increase the affordable housing stock. I'd love to have more of a nuanced discussion about that, you know, later on, but I really do appreciate that. So with that, I'll conclude, and I'll be around for questions, but I know we want to move things along here. So thank you for the time.
Excellent. Who wants to go next?
Good evening, everybody, and thanks to the mayor and council for having us. I'm very happy to talk about some of your priorities and a little bit about what's on our radar. I am Delegate David Moon, along with Senator Smith and Delegate Wilkins. We are your faces with Delegate Charcutian, who's absent in Annapolis. And so I don't want to bury the lead here of what's going on in government these days. And I'll start backwards. Your bond request for $200,000 is a very reasonably-sized request, and it's aimed And it's aimed at a policy priority of our whole team. And I think the state is focused on better mental health delivery, especially for those folks that touch the criminal justice system otherwise. So I don't want to make any predictions about how it turns out. But like I said, it's a very reasonably sized request. Why do I say it that way? Because we are unfortunately heading towards tight budget times. In every single legislative preview meeting I've had this past summer, I had warned about this possibility. And as we get a month away from the start of the legislative session, that possibility seems to be very real. The governor this week, maybe just yesterday or today, released a draft transportation budget, and it has across-the-board cuts in every county for every type of project. Mark transit services, road repairs. He's taking a whack to everything in an attempt to shore up falling transportation revenues for various reasons and added costs from inflation and what have you. So the era of those pandemic surpluses is more or less over, and much of that money is accounted for. On the horizon, we have, we have committed to the blueprint education funding, robust reform package to really lift every student. And we are hundreds of millions, if not billions, behind on what the annual spending needs to be to meet those obligations. And so we're in deficit of one or two more billion dollars a year very soon. So it's not surprising to hear the city ask for increased revenue authority. Montgomery County is also asking for this. Anarundel County is also asking for this. The Eastern Shore counties, my God, are asking for this. And some of these bills were very difficult and did not pass the last time around because they're seen as tax increase bills, even though it's us voting to let someone else do the increasing of the taxes. So I just want to be candid that the powers that be, to my knowledge, have not, they're not yet in a place that folks want to do this. I don't, you know, I've got my own feelings about it. I like to be fiscally responsible, and I like government services and infrastructure spending and investment that we need. But at the moment, that means we would be needing to do something on the increased revenue side. So this is a conversation all of us will have to have and hopefully can get to a resolution before we have to take a huge axe to many of the priorities we have. So that's probably where we're headed. That was just the transportation budget that was announced this week. And I expect we're going to see the same when it comes to the rest of the budget, environmental enforcement, housing, and all the like. So that puts us in a position of needing to really prioritize at the moment and to make sure that we steer cuts and preserved spending on those things that, again, our community cares about. I will say very candidly for me what that means other than preserving. So to the extent we're cutting transportation, I'd like to steer that towards unnecessary highway projects and preserve our ride-on transit mark, Wada, funding to the maximum extent possible, along with our pedestrian safety upgrades on state highways. So wish us luck on that. On, I know Janelle, and I agree with her, about boosting housing funding for residents while we're in this belt-tightening mode. Healthcare and healthcare expansion, hopefully, but we'll see on that. And education, of course. So that's just on budget and taxes before we get to other stuff. I won't go too much into policy matters because I really do think the budget, it impacts all of our policies. That's the big story for the year that we're heading into. But I do want to second what Senator Smith has mentioned, that we have a real crisis with firearms at the moment. The Supreme Court already went and said, you got to issue handgun permits. This is not a discretionary thing. And now we've got circuit courts, federal circuit courts, who are saying no permit at all is necessary, which puts us in a very poor place, given the firearms violence that we're already facing. So we have a number of ways we're going to try and put a dent in that. Are we solving it? I don't think so. But I think that's the new world we are headed into, unfortunately. Juvenile offenses, I'll also flag that. You've heard a lot about this. There's some mythology going on here, and there's some truth going on here about what the problems are in the system. And we've been spending a lot of time trying to sift through that, the noise, to try and actually get to solutions that will actually service our youths well and keep them out of trouble, again, to the maximum extent we have the possibility of doing. Very briefly now, a couple of things that you raised. Childcare, it's an ongoing concern. There are money issues here. On the policy front, at the request of Montgomery County this year, we did one small thing, which the governor has assisted with, which is allowing non-citizens to get licensed for childcare as childcare providers, which was not the case. It had gotten shut down somewhere during the Hogan administration. And so that's back up and running. So we hope you'll start seeing at least on the supply end, a little bit more there. On housing production, you'll see some local bills affecting Montgomery County that me and the District Twenty team are supporting, which include efforts to facilitate affordable housing production and to remove some 1930s-era restrictions on parcels of land, including in our area, that where they say someone in the 30s put something on the deed that says you can't build anything but single-family housing here, even though decades later, the county zoning says otherwise. So keep your eyes on that. Lastly, R C V, right choice voting, Tacoma Park has inspired this. We tried last year to get the city's new voting equipment, which is about to contract for, to be compatible and usable by Tacoma Park. We couldn't pass that bill, but the Board of Elections Director is nevertheless asking the vendors who are bidding about this capability. So something positive came out of that. And of course, on pedestrian safety, we're all, all systems go. We're always trying to do more here. We have a number of local bills intended to give the city more authority over its own speed limits, once again. So with that, I will pass it on to my colleague Delegate Wilkins.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So good to be here with you tonight. I always look forward to our joint meeting with our wonderful city council. So thank you for the invitation and the welcome. I am Delegate Janelle Wilkins. I am proud to serve with this dynamic team. And I want to thank everyone virtually and in person who testified and shared their comments tonight. It is so helpful to hear from you directly around the issues that you'd like us to focus in on, especially as we go into session and we're crafting our legislative agenda. So thank you for your comments and your participation. So in the legislature, I wear a couple of hats, which help dictate where I spend my time. I serve on the Ways and Means Committee, and I'm the vice chair of that committee. So we deal with education issues, taxes, gaming, and also election law, which I'm the chair of election law as well. So any bills dealing with voting and elections come to my subcommittee there. I'm also the chair of the Legislative Black Caucus of Maryland, which is the largest black caucus in the country at 66 members. And we put forward an agenda as well dealing with health issues, housing, wealth, public safety and justice reform, as well as education equity. So in addition to my individual legislation, I'm also working to shepherd the priorities of the Black Caucus as well. So there's a whole lot going on, and those are sort of some of the things that I juggle during session and beyond. I wanted to start by responding to the priorities of the city council. And thank you so much for such clear, concise priorities and the very robust and amazing goals that you all have for our community. They all resonated with me and I know with our constituents all across the district. Around health insurance for undocumented individuals, there was a piece of legislation introduced this session that passed the House. Dealing with that, all of us in the House supported and voted for it and will certainly do so again and will work. I know it's something that the senator is supportive of as well and will work to ensure that we get full passage of that. It might take, that is a big bill, and sometimes with big bills, it takes a year or two or three to get them done. And I think it was in its first year. So I think we might need some more time and advocacy on it, but I'm glad to see that as a priority, and that's something that we'll continue to champion. On the issue of affordable housing, it does seem that this next session is going to be a big session for affordable housing issues. And I do want to point out that last session, a bill that I sponsored dealt with our housing vouchers and the waitlist all across the state when it comes to housing vouchers. And we actually created the second-in-the-nation program, a state housing voucher program, where we look at the folks on the waitlist and prioritize seniors, those with disabilities, people who have young children and so on and so forth, to bring them off the waitlist. And that bill put $30 million in state funds to get people housed who are on that waiting list and prioritizing some of those categories that I just mentioned. So I do want to flag that bill that's being implemented now. That was a really important start to working to reduce some of the waitlist and wait time when it comes to the housing voucher program. And I think that you'll see a number of additional affordable housing bills, both coming from and championed by the governor and also members of the legislature next session as well. The issue, since I am the committee I serve on and lead the committee, dealing with revenues, I know that revenue streams is something that all of us, as David outlined and articulated very well, we are in challenging circumstances, especially in the out years, when it comes to our state budget. So we are also looking for revenue streams. I would just say that strategically, I'd be curious on the revenue streams that you outlined, if those are going to be overall M M L priorities. I think that in terms of the city really being able to push those, we'll certainly raise it in committee. But as you know, it'll be a much stronger voice if you have the jurisdictions across the state making these similar asks. So that would be my comment slash question there. On the issue of just cause eviction, for anyone who may not know, I talk about this issue a lot, but Just Cause Eviction is a bill that I've sponsored for, this will probably be the fifth time that I'm introducing it, but the fifth time is the charm. And this bill deals with evictions that take place at the end of a lease. It requires a landlord to provide a reason if they decide not to renew a lease. And it is a really important bill when we think about eviction protection. We think about making sure that renters are empowered to speak up without having the fear that they will be evicted at the end of their lease because a landlord does not have to provide any reason or any justification. And the city has been an amazing champion and partner every single year around this bill. But I feel confident, I know that the good senator, we do have a Senate cross file in Senator Muse, who is a senator from Prince George's County. And I feel confident that my good senator and colleague will bring that bill out for a vote in 2024. He's nodding his head, everyone. I had to get him. I had to get him. So I'm really excited about bringing that bill, increasing the momentum. We have support of cities and counties all across the state. It's an enabling bill. So what it does is it allows a jurisdictional authority to put forth a just cause eviction provision in their jurisdiction. So very excited about the work around just cause as well. Just generally around the issue of health, that's definitely been an area that I've focused in on, especially around health disparities. We really saw during COVID how much our health disparities really can be a death sentence and how much comorbidities really challenged and ravaged our communities throughout our district and throughout our state. And so whether it comes to cancer issues, which is this legislative session, we champion legislation dealing with lung cancer and breast cancer and the disparities that we see there and making sure that health insurance would be, would be used and that we actually prohibited coinsurance and copayments when someone's diagnosed with those cancers, having to go back for additional diagnostic testing, that we made sure that there's a prohibition on having to pay coinsurance and copays for that when it comes to the diagnostic testing. So that was something that was really important. In addition to the work on cancer, you'll see more from us as well around maternal health and the disparity, black women are four times as likely to die as a result of childbirth in the state of Maryland. And that is an issue that I have championed and passed a number of bills on. And I'm specifically going to focus next year on severe maternal mortality, which means the near misses, the women who end up having a very severe clinical challenge after giving birth, because right now we focus on the women who die. And we need to make sure that we are taking a look at the near misses and the data that we can glean from that and working with our hospitals to make sure that those don't happen. So certainly the health issues committed to the blueprint, as well as the last issue that I'll talk about tonight, is the blueprint for Maryland's future. If we're really being very honest about the budget, part of our challenge is that we need to fund the blueprint. We have invested a whole lot of money, policy thought, into ensuring that we have state-of-the-art schools in the state of Maryland. And we have some work to do to make sure it's fully funded in the out years. And I want our constituents to know that we are fully committed to ensuring that the blueprint for Maryland is funded, that our schools do meet the goals that we set out in the blueprint, which includes early childhood education expansion, which includes raises for our teachers, which includes expanding our community schools and so many other important provisions. So thank you again for this meeting and this conversation and looking forward to further discussion.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Just as a quick reminder, I believe Councilmember Gibson is also joining us virtually. And so now we're just going to have a little time to chat. So just want to make sure that folks know that if you want to talk, just please hit your light, and I can keep track of who's hit, who light was hit when. And so it looks like Councilmember Small has the first question.
Thank you, mayor. And this is, I hope to return to more pointed questioning, but I did want to say a few sort of kind things about the people in the District Twenty independently. So we opened a park in Hillwood Manor, and Lord was there. We had a national night out that was wonderful. And I inadvertently just watched the mayor sneak around with Delegate Wilkins and just do the actual stuff and not over-politicize herself. Unfortunately, Delegate Moon and I had a really bad time with the Tacoma Park Police Department in a hot dog contest. We were roundly beaten, and I had an elimination. It was terrible. There's video. And the last thing that I wanted to say is sort of poignant, and it's a continuation of the story that I told about when I was fortunate enough to testify on the predictive covenant legislation. But as a part of that, I had the opportunity through our wonderful aunt to testify on both sides. And on the House side, it was, I guess I'll say acrimonious. There were consequences to the mayor's testimony, I think. It was so acrimonious. But on the other side, I had the good fortune of testifying in front of Senator Smith's committee. And during that, inadvertently, the person who had dropped the legislation was unable to come. And since I had been waxing poetic on this as an issue since I was in law school, and that was a long time ago, he afforded me the luxury of getting a chance to explain a little bit more about why it was relevant. And at the end of it, I said, well, actually, it may have been at the beginning. I said, you know, Bismarcky would look at this and be really happy because in the vernacular, it's good to see people up on it. And there's a line at the end of the song Vapors, and it says, blank, "It feels good to see people up on it." And the manner of eloquence and kindness that he showed in the context of it, after, you know, running into the chief justice who I went to law school with, it was just kind of a weird day. After that, the first thing that I did was send that video to my mama. And my mom was so impressed with the deftness of the chair. She thought he was handsome and had good hair. But nonetheless, it really is a pleasure to be a constituent of you guys and to not have to worry about whether or not you're properly represented at the highest levels or at the next level. So I just wanted to thank you all for that year so far, to thank you personally again in public so that people know how good you are at what you do, and to tell you that my mom thought you were cute.
Thank you, Councilmember Small. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to each of you for coming here tonight and spending some time with us, but more especially thank you for all the work and the time that you put in representing District 20 and the, and needs of this city especially. Senator Smith, I see your hard work in the Senate and appreciate your leadership there and the work you put in. It's, as Councilmember Small said, it's heartwarming to know that we're represented so well as you do. And I'd like to especially call out Delegate Moon, my neighbor in Ward Four. Again, glad to see that you're not only being recognized by District 20, but also by your colleagues in the House of Delegates for your leadership. And I think it's very appropriate. And Delegate Wilkins, again, I thank you so much for the work you put in and for the way you and Delegate Charcutian and the rest of your team really keep Tacoma Park in mind and the Tacoma Park community and our priorities in mind as you do your work. I just, one thing I would like to thank you all for is your kind words and appreciation of not just our priorities, but especially the bond bill that we're requesting this year. And I think it's an example of how we try to work with you in addressing the needs of Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBaughn?
Yeah, thanks. I'm not gonna pile on. I'm just gonna say that I'm a fan and you all know that already. I did want to ask about a couple of the county bills related, let me rephrase that. The state bills related specifically to Montgomery County that you all have been talking about the last week or two. We weren't able to make the hearing last night, clearly. What would be the best way for us to communicate our support for some of these bills, particularly the ones that are pedestrian safety related, but there's a couple of others of interest to the city? Would we do a letter? Would we just wait till it comes up in public at the State House? What's the best way to help you on these bills? Yeah, yeah, that's probably you.
Well, I'll just say, the pedestrian safety bills, for the most part, are gonna start having Montgomery County delegation subcommittee meetings, work sessions really, starting in early January, actually. So that, you know, Montgomery County's a little nerdy. So with bills only affecting Montgomery County, we get a jump on it. And so that stuff is the first to get considered in Annapolis. And the local delegation will meet and discuss them in small groups, again, starting early January. So if the city would like to have its perspective on these or any amendments, if you have language tweaks considered, you probably want to get moving, you know, and have something ready to go by like the first week or so in January and out to members.
Okay, great. And thank you for introducing some, at least one of them fixes a problem we've already got here in the city. Thanks.
Great. Well, I actually want to ask a couple of questions. You're awesome. Let me just start by saying. You're great. I love you all. This is wonderful. Let's talk about bills. So, so one of the things Delegate Wilkins that you brought up was how we have been in consultation with MML regarding revenues. And one of the things that we know, it's still a priority for MML, but I think they've heard some of the budgetary constraints and are taking a slightly different approach in terms of maybe having like a work group formed that could really kind of do a bit of a deeper dive into figuring out what some of the possibilities are. So based on the financial outlook of the state at this time, how likely will there be any hard, fast revenue-based bills that will hit the floor? Is everyone understanding where we are in terms of the budget? And so we likely won't see too much. David's face says it all.
You're saying, and did we, David, have you mentioned that you're the Majority Leader of the House? Let's make sure we congratulate and recognize our Majority Leader of the House. Brand new position, so first session coming up that he'll be serving in that role. So you're saying, how likely is it that the state moves forward with a bill related to?
Correct. I'm pretty sure there will probably be folks that will propose things. We're trying to be mindful of our efforts, right? So from an MML perspective, if we can at least get something on the table to start exploring what realistic options are, that may be something worth pursuing. Do we push hard to try to get something that's a little bit more specific in terms of revenues at this point? Or is it a bit of a futile exercise, especially given that everyone is asking for something, right?
I think, I think that in this term, the way that the budget is looking, it is going to be difficult. I don't know if it's going to be next session, this upcoming session 2024 or this session after that. But I think that it is difficult to figure out a way to have our budget numbers add up without raising revenue in some way. That could be, that could be something related to fees. It could be something related to taxing. But I think it's hard to figure out how our budget can be balanced without raising revenue in the state. I don't know the timing, don't know what it will look like, but I think that's a very, that is a very real conversation, for sure. In terms of the city, so it's always challenging in terms of providing additional powers to local jurisdictions to be able to tax. I think for a couple of reasons, the state, you know, wants to, wants to make sure that we are being stewards in terms of the public. And when the jurisdictions are taxing, the state is taxing, it can become sort of, sort of a lot. I think that strategically, if the jurisdictions out of the list of the items that you provided and the potential revenue streams, I think that if there was sort of a coalescing around one, I think that that would be strategic and helpful. But the issue of taxing, as you can imagine, becomes very, very political. And because the state may need to raise revenue itself also, providing that greater authority to the jurisdictions might become complicated. But perhaps another play is if revenue raising does happen at state level, how can some of that also be kicked back to the jurisdictions, the cities as well? I think that that's a very fair play to make and ask to make as well.
That's helpful. And I did get to take a peek at the MDOT budget and it's bleak. I know that we are, we're pushing a lot for S H A to do more. And I was just celebrating the fact that the purple line was not being cut in any way. So there were, there were a lot of, a lot of cuts. Given that, and I know Laura spoke earlier about some of the things that she's trying to do from the S H A point of, but also given this budget outlook, you know, we would really appreciate being able to engage with you all, Laura and all of you, around ways that, and again, I want to first acknowledge that S H A, since this current administration has been more responsive. All you have to do is drive on Carroll Avenue and you'll see they're doing stuff, right? So that is very appreciated and we value the partnership that we have with our S H A colleagues. But there's still so much more that needs to be done. And in light of these budget cuts, really pushing any bills that we can to really just try to increase in the responsiveness of things and the timing of things, which typically relate to money, right? So again, I appreciate anything that you all can do on your ends to really try to coalesce around bills that could actually really help municipalities and jurisdictions to be able to move some of these big ticket items that have been permeating for a while forward. I think if we are able to do those three and that bond bill, that might be a really, oh, and just cause. I'm gonna be there. I promise you, I will be there for just cause. And we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep stomping it until it's done. But anything that we can do really in terms of S H A would really help us as a city. So Councilmember Small, I see your light.
Thank you, Mayor. Having said all of the effusive things, I did want to point to a couple of policy areas that even though I kind of referenced in my comments, but I'd like to deal with more specifically. And I think that it's the nexus between some of the juvenile justice, public safety things and the built environment here of being a landlocked community. And in large part, I'd say that we have some particular issues related to both inter-jurisdictional cooperation because of, and I've always appreciated the attention that you guys have paid, in particular to Ward Six, as a nexus of a couple of different kinds of things in both national policy areas or local policy. So if there is an opportunity to encourage the communities or people that are at the state level or beneath you guys to nudge them to want to cooperate with us, that would be excellent. One of the issues that we personally had in the neighborhood is some of the issues with the borders and the frequency of people doing crimes in one place and hopping to the other. And so if there could be some flexibility or some increased cooperation in that area, it would be helpful. I think the second thing is also related to that. And perhaps it may be the public-private partnership generally. But there's a lot of stress, in particular on Ward Six, that's been consistent due to the purple line, due to the traffic issues and things like that. And we are one of the few communities that has large high rises with very little opportunity or very little green space near them for those kids to recreate. And so I think that the nexus here may end up being something related to programming and consistency of programming at the state level and to prioritize those state actors to pay attention to some of the places, some of the micro places that, where real impacts could be had. We need to stave off the proximity of the likelihood of someone coming to decide it would be fun to carjack someone here. As it stands, they don't do that. They do it a little further down, but it's very close. And I think secondarily, if, if we look at it in a generational abstract, one of the things that I think we need to consider is, is the commitment of state powers to spending dollars on built environment, long-term benefits, like things that people can see that reflect the care and consideration of the administration or any of you guys. And I think one of the things that happens is, I'd just like to encourage you in the parlance, because you guys are all in leadership and you're good at your jobs, one of the things people tend to do is not want to look like they're a homer and bring a lot of other things and opportunities back to the neighborhood. I personally think we see that at the county level some. But if you guys could encourage some real programming dollars to be spent on opportunity youth, missing middle communities, integrating communities of international descent into the fabric of the state, I think it would be and pay great dividends. It's frustrating to see all of the black kids play basketball at one place and all of the white kids play another and to get in the car and go to the grand beauty of the Gaithersburg area and then be like, oh man, there ain't no place to play around here. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And I did want to respond a little bit to the prior discussion. It's not under my purview as Chair of Judicial Proceedings Committee, but for the budget, I mean, you've got, as David and Janelle have talked about, you've got the structural, you know, kind of shortcomings. You've got a lack of federal funding coming in. And then you've got a lot of things, innovative things that are great, important, like we want to, you know, we've got an ambitious goal for electric vehicles and to get off of ICE, you know, internal combustion engines. Well, that money goes to the, you know, the infrastructure, the infrastructure, the, you know, the transportation infrastructure fund. And so, you know, we've got to understand that, you know, we've got ambitious goals, we've got shortcomings, and we should not, you know, cede on pursuing those goals, but understanding that it's gonna, there's gonna be some, some cuts and there's gonna be some realistic discussions that need to go on with regard to some of those goals in the future because the fiscal situation is just not as plush as it was four years ago. So that's that. And the same conversation does carry over to, you know, the housing, that missing middle and expanding affordable housing and just cause and, you know, the vouchers availability. Nothing, none of this stuff happens in a vacuum. And so I'll articulate some of the countervailing forces that I hear about all the time for the housing issue. And then I'll go into the criminal justice stuff in a second and I'll be very quick. But, you know, when the county just recently passed a stabilization, rent stabilization bill. And so then a lot of folks will say, oh, oh my gosh, my property took a 15% hit. And if I don't have the latitude to focus on these rents, this is the other argument I'm saying, then I'm not gonna be able to reinvest in the buildings, the stock that's already there. Then I'm not gonna be able to entice new people to come in and build more affordable housing. You're gonna quash the market and you're gonna, you know, it's gonna, the current market's gonna go stale. These are market forces and supply and demand. I mean, this is like kind of economics one-on-one. So this is what you hear on one side. And on the other side, you hear folks are struggling, working two and three jobs and, you know, can't afford to live where there is opportunity, like, you know, there's not sufficient transportation to get to the job that they need. There are, you know, the schools that they want to put their kids into. And so these are kind of, you know, nothing happens in a vacuum. And I'm just, you know, I'm letting you know what the forces are coming in. And then you add on, you know, just cause eviction and all these other things. Like, these are things that complicate the conversation. And so those are the forces that we're dealing with. And I think, you know, I do applaud Janelle on both fronts for the voucher issue because, you know, we did good things, making sure you could no longer discriminate against those vouchers. But those are, that's a federal program and there's like a two-year-plus waiting list. And Janelle recognized that and has now gone forward and created a statewide program. We have empowered our Attorney General to help enforce that power, you know, as Carl Racine did in the prior administration down in DC. Now Anthony Brown has that ability to enforce those new regulations. So we're doing good stuff, but that doesn't mean that the conversation isn't nuanced and there aren't significant, you know, countervailing forces with this stuff. So I just kind of set the, that's what I hear, that's what I see, you know, in JPR. Should I be real quick on the, if not, I'll, I'll see.
No, this is your time.
Okay. For the juvenile justice stuff, look, I get, I've got a lot of pressure, I'm sure David has too, just being on judiciary, a lot of pressure about the bill that we passed, or one of the bills that we passed fundamentally changing the way we do juvenile justice. And I've said this time and again, that bill will, will make for a more equitable juvenile justice system. It has already. And it will ultimately make us a safer place in Maryland. Now, you know, a lot, I always say you've got to pay attention to trend lines and not always just the headlines. The trend lines, if you're a thoughtful policymaker and looking to see things down the line and what's really gonna move policy in one direction, you got to think of the trend lines. And the trend lines for violent crime from the eighties has been for adults and children is down. Now, there are significant spikes in certain, like carjacking and gun violence with youth. And that's what the headlines are telling you. And so you've got to, you've got to be sensitive to that and respond to that and understand that. But, you know, that, those trends existed before we passed the bill that went into effect on October 1. And so no one bill caused it and no one bill is gonna undo it. And I think that's the conversation we need to have, is that you have to understand that there are several concentric circles here. So you've got the Department of Juvenile Services, you've got state's attorneys, the prosecutors, the police. You've got all this stuff, and there are several points of failure within the system. And so what our job is to do is to shine a light on those points of failure and address them. And yes, make certain tweaks to the bill that we passed when we find that they're necessary. And I'll tell you, there are some tweaks that are, I feel are necessary, we're gonna do. But these are small tweaks that'll make a big difference. We're not rolling back the reform. I've said that publicly, I'm not interested in doing that because we haven't had enough time to see it take place. It just came online, October 1. So I think the narrative that, you know, up in Baltimore, for instance, there's Fox 45, it has a certain narrative that it's tough, but it's not, it lacks nuance and it's intellectually dishonest. And that's what frustrates me about this, we're losing the PR battle, but I think on the merits, we're right. And so I think the next session's gonna have, we're gonna have a very aggressive dialogue with those, with those, kind of those elements going into it.
I would just like to say in response to that, that I, part of the reason why I dress like this up here is to change the narrative of the PR battle associated with some of those things. And it's pretty easy to read through some of this to what is up in the ante on kids being kids in a technologically savvy environment and what is economic stressors. But I do think if you guys wanted to do a class action lawsuit on, with, at Kia for the amount of money that you've had to spend on that as an issue alone, I, I think that that'd be awesome if you could get Anthony Brown to do that one.
Look, and look, and to say, look, I mean, you're absolutely right. But, you know, that's not, this is, we have some significant public safety challenges. And it's all about how we address it. And, you know, that's, that's the conversation we're gonna have. But we, we are all keenly aware that we face significant public safety challenges. It's all about the way you do it and address it. And I think our, our session, next session's gonna be identifying those points of failure, of which there are many. DJS, you know, we've got, the, the Secretary lives here in Tacoma Park. Yeah, so he's, you know, he's a friend of all of ours. And he's used to hearing us say this, but it needs to give and work. And he, he just assumed that position, you know, a year and a half ago. So we'll continue to work on it. But, you know, we all understand that there are very significant issues. And we are going to work to address those next session, to continue to address those next session.
Great. Councilmember Fulcher.
Councilmember Dybala wasn't gonna pile on, I am gonna pile on. I appreciate that you all, if I'm doing my math right, came on during an administration that wasn't interested in, you know, increasing revenue and, you know, in, in providing more services and that we all thought that maybe we would be heading towards a change. And then we're in a post-pandemic world where financial strains have been exacerbated. We saw health issues exacerbated. And so it's not as good of a time to do some of the work that I think that we were all hoping that we were gonna be able to do in the state of Maryland, which, you know, I see especially in Tacoma Park, that we would be like, to be innovators and be creative and be doing big things. And so it's gonna be a little bit harder to do that right now. But I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing and that I do think you guys are effective. And I, I really hope that you understand the gratitude that we all feel for the work that you're doing and that you don't feel frustrated too often and that you, you all know that, that we appreciate you.
Councilmember Hanzak.
I'll keep my gratitude words to just a few, which is, thank you, thank you, thank you. I, as a, as a newer council member, I've also just, I've been in great admiration of all of you that you're everywhere, all the time, every minute. So I don't know how you do it. But thank you. And, and, and I, I wanted to, to just specifically ask you a little bit more on education. You talked about the blueprint for education. And I think all of us are seeing, I think there are three, three council members right now with younger children in the schools, in the public school systems. And so we're all up close and personal with those school disparities and outcomes and just the, the growing divide between the haves and the have-nots. And, and I'm curious what, as you say, you're digging through the weeds right now and what, what's likely to come out and get axed and what's likely to get prioritized. So can you just talk a little bit more about what you think is likely to happen in the coming session and how we might see that play out in our local schools? Yeah, right, but what, I hear my, my colleague saying, funding, funding. But what do you think is likely to, to not get funded? I know, I mean, specifically, it's been interesting, this year, I've watched from last year to this year, there's been a massive change in each and every school. I have my kids in four different public schools at all four levels. And the, there is no more funding this year for after-school tutoring outside of the community center here. But at the schools, no more funding. So none of the kids that were getting tutoring last year are getting it this year. Meanwhile, the scores are worse than ever. And the mental health issues are profound and real with almost every child I know. So I'm curious how you see that. Thanks.
Sure, absolutely. That's a great question. And I would put education issues into sort of two buckets. I think one is what I talked about with the blueprint for Maryland's future. If you're not familiar with the blueprint, it's basically a years-long effort by the legislature bringing together experts around education and literally putting together a robust bill that includes everything we possibly could have thought of and researched that's proven around creating a robust school system. So those are the things that I mentioned around professionalizing the, the teacher workforce, which, which includes teacher certification and sort of raising some of the standards around that and how we support our teachers, includes increasing teacher pay around recruitment and retention. We know that early childhood and students getting an early start is a proven way that leads to better outcomes. It includes that. It includes supplemental learning time. And I'm actually surprised to hear about funding that you just mentioned that has stopped. So I'd actually love to follow up with you offline so that we can kind of trace what's, what's going on there and make sure that our students are getting the extra supplemental support that they need because that is a priority of the blueprint. So there are a number of different pieces that are in it and it's a very expensive program. So I would put everything into two buckets. The things that are a part of the blueprint that we have committed to as a legislature. I believe that we are fully committed to continuing the funding. What we did was when we passed the blueprint, we funded it for several years out. However, in a couple of years, that funding that we had advanced is going to sort of run out. And so we're trying to figure out how we put the pieces together to continue in the long term, if you understand what I, what I mean. But I am getting a strong commitment from both chambers, from, from leaders, that we are super committed to making sure that that happens. Now, additional or supplemental items that, that people might want to see. For, for example, we're all interested in restorative justice around the conversation we're having around young people, right? I would love to see us put more funds, because restorative justice is included in the blueprint, trauma-informed education practices. We really doubled down on community schools, the community schools model, and actually put together concentration of poverty grants for schools that are higher need, for them to get more funding because they have various challenging education environments, to have community court, school coordinators and utilize the best practices of community schools. Now, for, I would love to see us expand on that and put more funds into it and target. That's where we get into, to your point, not, not cuts, but it's probably, it might be difficult in this, in this legislative session and the budget outlook that we have to double down even more and pour resources, necessary resources into those types of, you know, strategies that we know work, but we may not be able to, to provide additional funds for. So I would, I would put, I would say that things dealing with the blue, blueprint, I feel good about. I would be very concerned around cuts that have to do with our commitment that we made around the blueprint. But some of the additional programs and services and initiatives around education that all of us would, would like to see and double down on, it might be challenging just in this budget, budget time.
I'll give a little bit more color and candor to that question from my cynical, cynical perspective. And that's to say, the commitment was made on the blueprint and education spending. Not only that, what you've seen in recent years was that commitment. You saw us go to the voters at the ballot box and ask for the casino money to be lockboxt to make that commitment real, and it wasn't enough. And here we are, and we've got to do it again. And so I want to be clear about some of the other things that have happened and why, outside of inflation and a run-up in costs that everyone's facing, a tightening budget environment, the spend-down of the federal pandemic funny money, all of that stuff. And we made some policy choices. What were those? We decided that it was important for us to automatically enroll children into free and reduced meals and benefits of that like if they were eligible and hadn't applied themselves. And this was a ongoing, permanent, added budget item, a significant one. During the pandemic, coming out of it, we also decided to make Maryland the most generous state in terms of the low income, earned income, tax credit benefits. And we also made those available to non-citizens. Again, these were, we thought, the right thing to do for the most vulnerable residents, but they come with a budget cost. And you start to see that and all the other things add up. Again, we haven't made our blueprint commitment. But as Delegate Wilkins points out, she's confident that the blueprint commitments will be funded. I'm also confident about that. And I will tell you, and here's the cynical part of it, I had a feeling that federal money wasn't for long. And so I made a run right as it hit to try and steer some of that money to mental health funding. Because I thought something like that, this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I sort of missed my target by like a year, and it was just enough that that money's gone. The budget outlook has vastly changed since then. And I have far more dashed hopes of reviving spending on the magnitude that I was hoping we might be able to do to really get our mental health system in order. So what am I getting at here? You're asking one question, and we can answer your question about how education funding is gonna do, but my bigger question is about everything else. And so when I put forth this question about mental health funding a couple of years ago, I tried to put the word blueprint on it, blueprint for mental health funding. And they said, not so fast. Education is a special, it's its own category in Maryland. And I think this is true. The state will always prioritize public education funding over most everything else and for good reason. But it really means when we hit times like this, and we still haven't even shored up that education funding, I'm very concerned about our ability to fund the other stuff, healthcare expansion, housing expansion. I think the reality is maybe housing's having a moment right now. And so we might, we might see in juvenile issues, you might see in, in these moments, some, some additional eye towards that. But as a general matter, I'm very concerned about what's gonna happen to all of the non-education services spending in the coming years as we fight to shore up the blueprint funding and the budget tightens. So we'll see how this goes.
Well, I want to, while, while we're, everyone's noodling over, over the outlook.
Also give us a brand-new rec center for free. Just give us one, just, just land a rec center right on New Hampshire Avenue for free. That's awesome. Thank you very much.
But I do want to thank you all for coming out tonight. This has been a really enlightening discussion. And I can't stress enough how much I sincerely value work that you do in the city, but most importantly, your partnership to members of this council and the city of Tacoma Park and really trying to advance our shared goals and really trying to move things through in Annapolis. You know, you all helped us out with the library last year. We've, we've been able to see so many purple line grants. We've been able to see so many benefits to our community through the partnerships that we have with you all. So I just want to again send some, send my sincere thank yous, thank yous, thank yous for all of the work that you do for Montgomery County. We really appreciate it. And, yes. So with that, I'm gonna get us out by, by a little after eight. If there are no additional statements or items, okay, awesome. Well, thank you all so much for coming out tonight. We really appreciate you being here. And this segment of our meeting is adjourned.